Call the meeting to order, please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. There, I better turn on my mic, you can hear me. We'll first move to approval of the minutes, the meeting's held August 24th and September 2nd. Do I have a motion to approve?
No move.
Second. I have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. And if, when we talk, if we're gonna talk for a lengthy period of time, I am just pulling my mic down so people can hear or whatever, but just, but on emotions and all that, that's good, but Todd was having problems hearing us all talking with Meyer Mass at our work session last time, so we want to make sure he can hear what we're saying, and since we're socially distanced, we can do that. We have two people assigned to speak on non-agenda topics, I believe, yes? So they each get five minutes, and, are you able to time? Thank you. Carly will time you and kind of give you a warning when you have one minute left, and then stop, is that, or do you want to do 30 seconds too? She'll do one minute, 30 seconds, and then stop, so that you have a heads up when you are done. And we'll first start with Nicholas Levisay. Thank you. Please say your name and address again. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Nicholas Levisay, I live at 913 South Bonson Avenue, and I am a junior at Washington High School. I'm very encouraged by what was discussed during the September 2nd work session, and I'm here to speak on policy JCA, so that the board and the public can consider my perspective on the policy ahead of the first draft coming at the end of the month. And with regards to automatic open enrollment with honors and ACE, in addition to creating a stigma that LHS is the honors high school, it is evident that several other potential equity concerns surround the automatic open enrollment. I've been made more aware of the automatic, that automatic open enrollment also affects certain class enrollments at our schools. AP Calculus, for example, a class that is made up of a large number of honors students, decreased from approximately six classes to around two classes at Washington High School since honors students were given the option to open a roll to LHS. The enrollment of these classes impacts school evaluations and subsequent decisions. Additionally, one must question the equity of allowing a group of students who have been with each other throughout middle school to open a roll together into high school. If McGovern band students or Edison basketball team, which are both cohorts in the sense that they've spent three years in middle school together, are not allotted the same opportunity, why should honors students? As many students will have to make the difficult transition to a new school in 2021, I see no reason why honors students should be able to stay with their friends when other students cannot. In addition to the socioeconomic impact of open enrollment that I discussed before you in June, there is another negative side to open enrollment that has gone largely noticed by many in our community, and that is open enrollment for activities. As a cause of the equity concerns with regards to high school ban that I expressed in June, of the over 800 students currently open enrolled at Lincoln High School, the ban program at Lincoln High School is a leading motivation for a large amount of that enrollment. According to a poll conducted by Lincoln, nearly 65% of their program is open enrolled, that's about two out of three band students in their program. I reiterate the point from my letter regarding the impact that enrollment has had on the equity programs in our district. 24% of the 2020 South Dakota high school all-state ban was composed of just LHS students, and that's one example of the effects of open enrollment on SDH, SAA sanctioned activities. As I learned more about open enrollment impacts, I was initially skeptical of the impact of recruitment or other types of influence, or other attempts to influence the schools that students attend. However, I became aware of a case of recruitment in the Sioux Falls School District, yes, recruitment is a reality in our district, when I learned that a Sioux Falls School District employee told band students to attend a certain high school if they took their musical career seriously. This example is just one that I'm personally aware of, though I'm sure there are several other instances of recruitment in the Sioux Falls School District. For the sake of equity in our district and every program and every building throughout our city, I asked the Sioux Falls Board of Education and Policy Committee, work to change the class, the capacities for classes and schools in such a way that non-programmatic open enrollment can be eventually minimized in our district. I thank you for your time and consideration for the 25,000 students in Sioux Falls School District. Thank you.
Thank you, Nicholas. Next is Amy Heinert, please state your name and address. Thank you.
Hi there, my name is Amy Heinert, and I live at 3901 South Bedford Avenue, I have a first grader at Harvey Dunn Elementary, and I have a three-year-old who's a future student, and I'm here to speak about open enrollment after watching the work session earlier in September, but first I want to thank you for the work you did during Boundaries and the thought you put into, they were the beginning of more equity for our high schools and middle schools in Sioux Falls. There were some issues concerning open enrollment that were brought to light, and again, I thank you for being willing to address them. I know that it's a polarizing topic, so I really appreciate you being able, or being willing to take those on. Last week I contacted IPC, so I had current numbers for open enrollment just to get a clear picture, and this year with both combined in-district and out-of-district open enrollments, Roosevelt has 149 students open enrolled, Washington has 205, and Lincoln has 808. And to see those numbers was jarring. Again, I've been raised by teachers and coaches in the Sioux Falls School District, taught all over, I really thought I had a pretty clear picture, but to see that 808 number, and just to think that 800, 800 open enrollment spots are available at one school, and it just confirms some of the frustrations that many people have had with the current open enrollment process. I believe it stems from a few issues which you guys are talking about and willing to address, and I'm grateful the policy is being reviewed. I know open enrollment's a state law, I hope limits can be put in place so we're not in this situation again. If the policy isn't changed, if we had a crystal ball, I really truly believe we'll be in the same place, and then in three to five years, 500, 600 students could be open enrolling out of Jefferson to Roosevelt and to Lincoln. We learned some lessons when we opened McGovern Middle School. Dr. Stavum talked about, on the September 2nd work session, about being able to offer equitable opportunities and experiences at each building. Open enrollment creates disparities between our schools, and I'm hopefully the policy, I'm hopeful that the policy will be amended to create equal opportunities for all 25,000, 25,000 students in the Sioux Falls School District. Thank you again for everything you do.
Thank you. And for the public, at our next board meeting, end of September, we'll first put out the, for the first reading, the policies on open enrollment, and then the final reading on those will be the end of October, barring any major changes or so forth. So there, between those two times, we accept public comment and so forth on them as well, both in meeting, in let's talk, through emails to any of the board member, any and all of the board members administration, so thank you for being engaged and involved in the process, and we'll get, we'll get that completed. Thank you very much. We have no one speaking on agenda items, we'll move on to approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
No move.
Second. I have a motion, second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Now, goodness report. Thank you, Dan.
Good evening. As we've long said, what matters most in the Sioux Falls School District is that we are there to help each student find a pathway that allows themselves to experience the greatest access and success on their educational journey. And it, of course, takes a very dedicated staff and our students to cross the finish line as a team together, that finish line known as graduation. And of course, having just come off of graduation a couple months ago, that in itself is a celebration, but it's always a little feather in the cap when our schools are recognized nationally as well. U.S. News &amp; World Report has long been ranking the nation's top performing high schools. Their ranking is based on college readiness, math and reading proficiency and performance, the availability of college-level courses like AP coursework, and the performance of underserved students. And when you look at the rankings for South Dakota, we were pleased to see that all four of our high schools rank in the top 10% of South Dakota's 169 high schools. Washington High School is listed at number three, Lincoln High School is ranked at number eight, Roosevelt comes in at 13, and New Tech High School follows at 14. So very pleased to see those numbers. Certainly, we realize that is one measure of success, and that the criteria for the U.S. News &amp; World Report is very specific and quite narrow, and if you looked at another set of national rankings, one of our schools may be higher than the other, and, but it's just great to see that all four of our high schools are, are in those top performing areas. Not to leave out our other high school, of course, just this morning, we were notified that then National Academy of Finance has released its list of distinguished and model academies for 2020. We were pleased to see the Sioux Falls School District's Academy of Finance program at the Career and Technical Education Academy is recognized in that list. Penny Brunkin, of course, is our teacher who leads the Academy of Finance, she and her students are one of the 135 academies across the nation in the NAF network that have reached the distinguished level. So, again, another national recognition for our high school programs and our high school students and staff, very proud to share those successes and know that there has been a lot of hard work and dedication that goes into each one of those recognitions.
Thank you. Thanks, Dan. No, there weren't any new conflicts, were there? I did not see any presented today, so no new conflicts of interest. We'll move on to item 8A through F, approval of the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
No move.
Second. I have a motion, a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Onto supplemental consent agenda, we just have claims to Sanford Health System today, 9A, 1 through 3, do I have a motion to approve?
No move.
Second. I have a motion, a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries with two extensions from board member Ryder and board member Mickelson. Onto reports of the superintendent, FY '20 budget wrap-up.
As you know, we completed the fiscal year 2020, and on June 30th, this past summer, I'm just gonna walk you through real quick how, how we came out. So in the tax-supported funds, first we're gonna look at our revenues. We had budgeted $181 million in the general fund, our actual was 183.4, so we were $2 million to the positive on that. That was mainly, our ADM, our fall enrollment was higher than projected, and we did pretty well in the bank franchise tax as well. Of course, when you do well in one of, one of those funds that's outside the formula, two years later it goes into your local effort and you lose state aid and that, so we set up a reserve actually for that amount. Capital LA, we did well too, our, our valuation, our allowable capital LA, but revenues were higher, and we're limited there, but they came, our valuation went up, so we came in high, so we were 1.6 million to the good. Special Ed, we were about right on the money. Pension Fund, we really don't budget that anymore, we just get delinquent taxes and that, that fund is going away, and then bond redemption, we just, essentially, well, we just didn't quite take in as much, we got some delinquent taxes on that that we'll get in the future, so we didn't take as much there. On the expenditures, in the general fund with the schools shutting down in the middle of March, our expenditure, you know, and our expenditures were not as high as normal, most of that was on heat and lights and other electricity items, we weren't running our buildings like we normally would, so that, that was your biggest savings there, so we were $3.9 million to the good compared to the budget. On the capital LA fund, we had been purchasing computers in June, we'd moved that up from usually relying in July, but to try to get them in in late May, early June, but with, with COVID, we, they didn't come in until July, so we kind of skipped a year there, so that's what, that's most of that variance there. Special Ed, same deal as the general fund, there's just less activity going on at the end of the year, so we came in 2.2 million to the good. Pension Fund, we just budget what we transfer out, and bond redemption fund, we know what that's gonna be, so that, that, that's a consistent constant there. So when you look at the net, you know, the revenues compared to the expenditures, we had budgeted $1.3 million of fund balance, we actually grew our fund balance by 4.6 in the general fund. Capital LA, same thing for what we talked about earlier. Special Ed, the, the expenditure, the revenues were right on, expenditures came in low, so we had a $2.3 million positive there. Bond redemption, we had that 13 cent promise that first year, and so we've been working it in so that we're gonna get to even in that over about a three or four-year period because the, because the calendar year doesn't match the fiscal year, if you try to catch it all up right away, then the next year you're gonna have to lower the levy, then you're gonna have to increase the levy, so we're just easing into that, and so we're inter-fund borrowing there, our inter-fund. So how does it look, what does, what do the funds look like at the end of the year? The general fund, we actually grew it, we just said, so our fund balance is at 8.3%. Actually, I didn't update that slide, there, there's a slight adjustment from when I made that slide, it's actually a 9.5, it's at $17 million in the general fund, so we're at 8.3% there. Capital Outlay, we are at 26.1%. Yeah, this slide didn't get adjusted either, I'm sorry about that. It's actually 11.7 million, it's at 26%. Special Education is at $2.3 million, so that, that slide didn't get adjusted either, so, and we're not at 2.4%, we're at 5.3 with that, with, with the IDEA funds. And the bond redemption fund, we're in the negative, but that's where we're gonna, we're gonna catch up, so, yeah, these were off a report that was premature, so I didn't get those adjusted. So, the bond redemption fund is in the negative right now, but we have that plan over two or three years to, to catch that up. Then last but not least, we always look at the, our average teacher compensation, because that's now a report we, we file with the State Department of Ed. Our average teacher salary is, was that last year at 52,824, it grew 1.2%. When you add in the benefits, the total is 72,124, the salaries and benefits together grew 2.4%. What was our state aid increase? When you take out the one-time money from the prior year that we got, the, the increase was 1.8, so we exceeded that increase as we have every year since they did the half-cent sales tax, so in total compensation for teachers, we're, we are, continue to beat what we're receiving in state aid. So the board took formal action on the budget at the end of August, we held off because board member Mickelson wasn't live that night, and she's on the budget committee, so there is no action that needs to be taken by the board, this is just an informational report. Thank you.
Todd, can I ask a couple questions for the public? Thank you very much. So, knowing this, that we obviously ended up better than projected because of, you know, some issues and so forth, but going forward, why we're being cautious is because of, A, one of our next reports will see a decrease in our enrollment for this year, so our state aid will be going down.
That's right.
Than what we projected for five years.
Yep, our, you know, our state aid is based on our fall enrollment, and our fall enrollment is below, it's not only dropped, and we, and we had, it's not only lower than it was last year, but, but we'd also projected about an increase of 200, so we're gonna feel that this year in our, in our, in our funding from the state. So we're trying to be cautious so we don't, you know, spend all, all, all new federal money right away, and then in the, in the spring we run out of money, so, yep.
And then for the bond redemption, like the whip, so would you explain that a little bit for the public?
Yeah, so.
So they explain, I think that's good.
So we know exactly what we owe every year, and it's basically, you know, it's based on the calendar year, and, and this budget runs on a fiscal year, so if we raised up our taxes fast enough to, to cover what's owed in the calendar year, or in the fiscal year, then the next, the next, you know, it would be, it would be a big number for the calendar year, and then the next fiscal year we'd say, oh geez, we gotta lower those taxes so that, so that it matches the fiscal year, so it'd go up and down, up and down, so we're just easing into them, and we started with that 13 cents, we're easing in, we're easing into the amount, so about four years out from when we first started, it'll, it'll be a nice natural progression on that, and you're not just changing that levy up and down every year. That's That's what we're doing with that. Any other questions?
Thank you very much.
No, thank you.
No further questions. Thank you. We will move on to the initial 2021 fall enrollment. Thank you, Doug.
Good evening. The fourth, the end of the fourth day of the school year, we present to the board the initial enrollment and then the last, and then towards the end of September, we'll present the final enrollment, which I think is the last Thursday of September, something like that. So this is sort of where we're sitting as of the fourth school day. So if you look at it, you can see K through five versus where we were at last year. We're about 389 kids short. Sixth through eighth grade, about 54 higher, and ninth through 12th grade, 190 higher. And so net K through 12, we're 145 short of where we were last year. And then pre-K and junior K are pretty consistent with where they are last year. And so I'll give you some sense of where some of that is coming from. You look at our, as you were just talking before with Business Manager Veek, we had projected an increase. So you can see there, we were projecting to be at about 24,384, and we're at about 24,093. So as we said, we projected a slight increase, and we're seeing a slight decrease. So that difference will make some difference in our funding that we receive from the state. Couple things we haven't seen is virtual enrollment, the virtual academy. So this can give you an idea of how many kids we were seeing at the time we did this in a virtual academy, just over 2,600 kids. And you can see that it's very consistent across the grades as far as the percent of kids that are enrolled in the virtual academy. So these are still counted as enrollment in our district. They're just not physically in our schools, but give you some sense by grade of what our virtual academy is looking like this year on a percent basis and a number basis. And then a couple charts here. If you look at current year versus prior year by grade, you can see across, as kind of talked about before, we're seeing a larger decrease in our elementary schools, specifically quite a bit at the kindergarten level. And so our feeling there is that, you know, we're going to see a lot of parents that are just electing to hold their kids back a year, and so we may see an increase next year, once that bubble works out, and then it kind of works its way across. And so to put that in context, we know we have more kids that are homeschool enrolled, and so that bottom chart there is what we're seeing for homeschool enrollments. And so we've seen about 226 kids more homes, signed up for homeschool than at this time last year. And then you can see across the grade levels, as I talked about before, certainly more at the elementary school level than at the middle school and the high school level. These will change slightly before the end of September, but I think last year, between the initial enrollment and the final enrollment, we saw about a 50-student change higher, it went higher. So I don't expect to see these change dramatically, but they probably will have the same, about the same tolerance level. So that would be the initial school enrollment report. Stand by for any questions.
Thanks for this data. I appreciate you going into the homeschool because that was one question I had, is how many increases we might see with that, you know, especially with COVID-related issues and so forth. And I think it's important for us to look at, you know, A, that kindergarten, what are we going to need to do next year, just why to plan if we do see an increase of enrollment? Because do our, will our buildings even have the rooms to have that many kindergarten classes and so forth? And then, two, do we need to look at junior kindergarten even expansion, too? And then, three, looking at, will these students becoming, the homeschoolers be coming back, too? And, you know, when we projected one number, and then we're below that and even less than that, you're figuring out those budget things. I appreciate all your work and making sure we're keeping us on track on doing this, so.
Yep. We'll keep watching it and report back to you. Like I said, we'll report back to you at the end of September with the final counts, and that will be what our funding is based on. But it shouldn't, it hasn't historically changed too much between this report and the final, so.
So I was wondering, would it be fruitful at all for us to maybe go back and survey some of those parents and see, are you just, are you waiting a year? I don't know if we're planning next year, if that's really a...
For the kindergarten-age students, you think?
For kindergarten-age students, just so we, for planning purposes for next year, not necessarily funding, but just making sure we've got enough teachers. I don't know. We're just keeping that out there. Not sure if it's, would register anything or not?
The hard part with that is how do we know who those people are? Because if they never registered to begin with, or did they register and then change their mind?
Well, we know the homeschoolers are registered because they have to present a waiver. If you're holding your kid back, I don't know that we would know those necessarily unless we just...
Unless we have their siblings in school and we're, you know, the school knew that they were having, and I get what you're saying, and I think that would be valuable if we could get a, kind of a temperature check on what people are thinking. And if that, I have heard from a handful of people that I know that have said, I didn't have to send my kids, so I didn't. And so I think that is a very valid reason. That may not be all 145, but I think that that's a significant chunk of those students. And so, yeah, I don't know. If there was a way we could get some information from them, it would be nice to have.
I'm throwing it out there. Except for the same thing for people whose kids are, you know, maybe they'll be five and a half, or something, they're just like, I'm just going to wait. Sorry. Yeah, I was just saying, I've heard the same thing that Carly has heard, where parents have said, we're going to wait another year, that kindergarten age.
Yeah. That'd be great if something like that could be considered.
Can I just interject as well?
You bet.
I think that's a good idea, and I think we'll have to do that for other purposes, too, because we'll have the flux now of people who are in virtual academy this year and choices that we'll have for next year. And so what will we base our enrollment on and our staffing on and the fluctuations between that and the general ed classroom, depending on the decisions we make for next year? So I think it'll be a puzzle, and that's been tricky this year when you think about the regularity of projections and then kind of the path that took with having a parallel with virtual academy, people who held them out and then trying to determine what that looks like. So I think we'll have a few questions, so it's good to think about it.
Any other questions for Doug? Seeing none, do I have a motion to accept the initial fall enrollment report?
No move.
Second.
A motion in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Okay, just had to make sure that came up. So tonight, I'm here to talk to you about our fall enroll, not enrollment, but our Fall Update 2020, and I will highlight just a few things that are different this year and how we move forward in the virtual academy. We'll talk about that. Fall parent-teacher conferences and our fall assessments. I'll just give you a lens into what that is looking like right now, and we'll have more information on those assessments later. So the first one, the virtual academy, and Doug touched on this just a little bit. The first time we reported out to you on that virtual academy enrollment was based on our August 24th data prior to the start of the school year. Once school started, we pulled those numbers, and these are the data points, or the number of students enrolled as of Friday at noon. And so we pulled that information, which might vary a little bit from Doug's. I saw just a couple differences based on when we pulled our information. So enrollment changed most dramatically at elementary, but when you think about who needs to be home with an elementary student, families that called us and said, we need to get back into that building, it was due to supervision or due to the commitment of being at home and that role of being there to support the students. The younger the student, the more support they need with that schoolwork, and so that is a difference there. And when we continue to look at what that virtual academy looks like...
Teresa, and just for clarification, I'm assuming green was the old one, red is the more up to date?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. Green was, yes, the left side was the first enrollment, the red was the last, yep, September 11. And, yes. And that's a difference because we had people calling us, let me in, let me in, let me in, other people saying, I want to go back, I want to go back. So it's a difference in there. So we had some jump in, some jump out. The next one is, what has that virtual academy teacher done over these last three weeks? So we're on day 11 today, and they were that IT support for families. And how do I turn on my Chromebook? How do I get logged into my Chromebook? How do I connect to my Wi-Fi? Once I'm logged in, where do I go and what does that look like? And that looks different for all three levels. And so really helping to support that. They also help develop that relationship with that family, that teacher's reaching out to that family, just getting to know them a little bit and what's your, what's it look like in your house? What's your plan? Are you going to support the student? What's your schedule look like? You know, some will say, I'm going to work more at night on my curriculum because my mom and dad are away during the day, and so that's fine. Some are working on the weekends on the curriculum, just so they know what those are and when the teachers are available to support them. And then also, they help them explore the platforms which they would be using. So Calvert at elementary, Edmentum, and Apex at middle school, and then Apex at high school. And so really looking to see what that would look like. Teachers created videos to help acquaint the students and the families with that platform and where they're going to find their assignments and where do they, how do they turn it in? And that was what we heard the first few days, is I don't even know how to turn this in. And when we think about it, all of those things and processes were, are what we do in the classroom every single day with kids. And so helping parents to understand how to do that, and so that teacher and the parent and the student working together to help figure that out. And then one other thing, you know, once in a while, a company gets overloaded, and we see that all the time at the beginning of the year with all of our other programs we use within the school. So NWA, and I'll talk about that a little bit, our MAP assessment, they've been down for four days. Okay, so think of you as a parent at home. If your platform, your learning platform is down for four days, it's not anything that we're doing, but how do you, what do you do in that situation? And so that's the teachers helping them to understand, okay, if your learning platform's down, or if midco's in your neighborhood and takes your Wi-Fi down, what are you going to do? And so just helping them to understand, because in the classroom, teachers naturally pivot. Kids don't even know the difference, but if you're at home with your child, helping them to understand that. So that's a big workaround for them. Communication. And then encouragement, just giving those families that you can do it because they want to do it right. And that's what we've heard from grandmas and grandpas and moms and dads and aunts and uncles, everybody that's helping support that student. You know, they have lots of questions. What if, what if I don't do an assignment in one of these areas today as my child falling behind? And just giving that ongoing encouragement because they are working really, really hard, and we've heard great success stories, and we've heard challenges. But again, we're just learning this way of school for students and families and teachers, and it's gone well. Have we had bumps along the way? We have, but we're working through that. And every time we get to talk to a family, they provide us information and clarity so we can get better at the teaching of virtual academy. So that's virtual academy. And we will have, we're asked families to give it, you know, preferably a year, but a semester at least. And so December 1, we'll get some information out to families about asking the question, do you intend to stay in for second semester or not? Or do you want in, you're not in currently? So we'll gather that information for all levels so we can plan, and counselors and people that create those schedules and courses can plan accordingly also. So we'll send that out that first week in December to all families so they have that information. My next one is parent-teacher conferences. So as we look forward to the changes due to COVID-19, and parent-teacher conferences is one of those, it's coming up very quickly, and teachers are planning for that, but we know it has to look different. And so when we're doing parent-teacher conferences this year, they'll be offered virtually for families, and so the teachers will be reaching out to those families and letting them know what that's going to look like. A short video for, this is what we have been learning in our classroom, and this is where we're going for the rest of the semester. This is what you can look for, for your child to bring home. If you have questions, you can reach out to me. Some buildings at different grade levels are going to just do a Google form, so that way parents can sign up for that short 15-minute meeting virtually. And then some families and students, it works better for them to come into the building. So there'll be a select few that need to come into the building because of connectivity or a meeting that needs to be held, and so those options will be out there for families. But the buildings will be communicating that out to their families shortly here so they can schedule parent-teacher conferences.
And we'll still have interpretive services and so forth for all of those as well.
I'm sorry.
We'll still have all of our interpreter services and all of those services for our families as well.
Yep. Good question. So the interpreters, we're scheduling those as normal, and the families and the liaisons will help get connected. So there, again, it, does it work by phone? Does it work by a Zoom meeting or in person? And which one is best? And that's for all families. My last area here is to talk about assessments, and so when we think about the beginning of the year, we have assessments that we do to check learning and to guide our instruction. And so for kindergarten through eighth grade, we give the NWA MAP assessment annually three times, or we give it in the fall, winter, and spring, and it's no different this year. And as I said earlier, they've been down for four days. And so our first date was September 18th, so this Friday was going to be the end of the testing window, but we've extended that now for an additional week to give schools time to complete that assessment. And then what do we do for students who maybe are not in school right now due to close contact or quarantine? They will, when they come back, they will still take the MAP assessment, and that data won't be reported out as a cohort, but the teacher will have that individual RIT score so she can, she or he can use that to guide their instruction. So all students do have the opportunity to take it, even if they aren't in our building during that assessment window. And then the other one is the SIPs assessment that we give, the SIPs placement assessment for first and second grade in our eight buildings. And so really looking at how do we support our youngest readers? And the good news is, they're starting to do those placement assessments, and our second grade assessments are coming back. Now, you have to remember, as a second grader, I have more skills, and so I'm retaining that information. I have a solid foundation on reading, and we're seeing that of the information that has come back, that the students stayed where they were or they grew. And that's in second grade. And again, they have some of those skills built up, so they have the ability to continue to read. And so I have a second grader, this was asked, how did you grow so much as a reader? And the student hadn't quite completed SIPs Extension 20, so they're about halfway through graduating in March, and he reported back he had learned to read. So he checked out a nonfiction book on reptiles from the bookmobile over the summer, and he read the whole thing cover to cover. And so that's a second grader saying, this is, this is what enabled me to continue reading over the summer, is he had that skill, and so is continuing to grow as a reader. And that comment echoed what they heard at other buildings, too. So as we continue with those SIPs placement assessments, we'll come back to you with a report on that. a report on that complete look at what it means for first and second grade. And with that, I'll stand by for any questions.
Thank you. That's all great news, except for MAP being down, I'm sorry about that.
And that's nationwide, it's not us, it's nationwide, so.
I just want to say thank you to the staff for all of this work and what you guys are doing, and at the entire district at all levels is just amazing to me what you're doing. And I know there have been families upset, maybe making complaints and posting things on social media, but I just keep directing them to call back to their buildings, because I know they think they might have a simple question that might be, and my concern would be, when we post an answer to one specific FAP pattern, you might think you have the same FAP pattern, but you don't. So you would rely on that as your information, and that is not correct information. So please reach out to your buildings, reach out to your teachers, they will get you the right information. We are here to help you as a district, and we want to be successful. So it's not a matter of not being able to respond on social media, it's more that we want to get the right information, not just a quick answer. So thank you for all you are doing on that.
Good example of that is today, we got notice that Class Link was down, which is our single sign-on, and, and we're like, but it's very sporadic, there's only a few kiddos, and this student in virtual academy made a short little video and sent it in, so we could understand what was going on. They were law, they were going on to the website to log in instead of going into on our webpage, Class Link. Fixed it. But until that happened, we didn't know, and so it wasn't systematic, it was just very individual. So we do appreciate them contacting us, so we can help them individually help solve those problems.
If you could comment a little bit, we had talked about, like, the number of teachers that we've hired, and how many for, you know, virtual academy versus our classroom, and what our classroom ratios are and things like that. And so I don't know if you want to just comment on the impact that that has, that virtual academy has had on our actual in-person classrooms?
Yep, so when we think about enrollment at the elementary level, we hired 30 virtual academy teachers, which pulled those teachers, but also 1,000 students out of those classrooms. Right now, our classroom sizes are the smallest that they have ever been, and we looked at that individually, section by section across the district, and made a decision to hire four more teachers to help those four classrooms, or those four sections across the district that were just a little bit larger for COVID numbers for this case. But in traditional years, we would not have added additional teacher into those classrooms. So yes, we're looking at those class sizes, just to ensure that we're keeping what we said we would do.
And we're hiring clerical at our high school and middle school buildings as well to help with what we're in, noting in contact.
Yep, right, right. Eight positions were posted for contact tracing to help support the clerical in the middle school and the high schools, yes.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other questions for, seeing none? Thank you. Do I have a motion to acknowledge the fall 2020 update?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same say? Thank you. Anything else, Dr. Stedman?
I guess I would just comment that the year is progressing, and your comments about social media and what's fact and what's fiction. We, we saw one recently that said we were going to begin keeping students all night to avoid exposure, which I can confirm is false.
My 17-year-old son.
We are happy to send them home to their families at night, but the best information is at our schools, and we are continuing to see kids learning, and we see kids enjoying their activities, but we are still encouraging everybody to follow our protocols, including masks, social distancing, hand washing, because the easy part is starting in the year, and the harder part is going to be diligent over time. And so we really want to continue to ask families to help us with those measures, so that we can continue to have basketball, and wrestling, and track, and all of the fine arts and things that we're able to do, even if it's not quite in the ways that we typically do them, because if you remember, our goal is to have kids participating in their activities. Might mean some inconveniences for adults, but we want kids to be able to do their activities. We know it's an inconvenience if a student might be quarantined, particularly if they are not sick, but that is one of those mitigation strategies that helps us keep our actual numbers of people who have the virus very, very low. So thank you to everybody for what they're doing, and we just appreciate the support that we've seen, and we'll continue on with school.
Thank you. Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion second, all those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same say? We are adjourned, thank you.